Call this meeting to order. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law, for the United States of America, and to the Constitution, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the mission of the Constitution.
Before we get started, there's a thank you note on your table if you would read that and just pass it down, please.
It's great. Do we give my name again?
With the board then, other than the scholarship.
Oh, okay.
Your motion to approve the agenda with the added items. All in favor? Looks like there's nobody from the community to pass on that. Is your motion approved in minutes? Regular board meeting, May 13.
Some will.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Today's day.
Okay, we have donations. Assembly of God donated $130 for graduation needs for needy students. Ron Brooks donated a snare drum valued at $150 and an Alco Sacks valued at $750 that he gets to the middle school band program. Larry Bauer, two sketches valued at $500 each, and Mick Stoll to be used for the costumes for the high school musical valued at $50. And then Charlie Larson was unable to attend the FFA banquet, so he sent a $100 donation to the president. So we would need a motion to approve.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve with appreciation. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have two sketches for it?
Carl, two sketches, do you know anything about them?
No, she gave them to Monica Reeves. I haven't really seen them.
I've seen them. Yeah, there are two sketches that were, they were costumes used in a famous musical or play now, can't remember which one it was. And they're, they're not very large, but they were the original drawings for the costumes for, you know, like Gone with the Wind or one of those famous films that had a connection, the person had a connection to the art and costume designer. And they're framed and they're very nice, I mean, they're lovely because they're very historic.
Do you know where they're going to be put up?
Well, I don't know where they're going to be put up. They were given to-
I think they're for drama plays or-
They were for drama. She just had them in a room at the moment, they just received them. So, but they're really interesting.
Anybody make?
I did. I went to environmental day at the chain. And it was great. In fact, it was incredible. There were probably 15 stations set up around the perimeter of the school. And in the woods and down in the river and it was really something. And then there were two adults at every station and the kids rotated from station to station. Probably eight to 10 kids in each group. Parents volunteered, staff volunteered. And some of the things that were being taught were incredible. Seed pods and nature games and animal habitats and hide and call art and ducks and chicks hatching. It was, it was really something. I guess what struck me too is, is the beauty of that campus. It's so gorgeous. It's, I'd never actually been out in the woods behind the chain. It's really lovely. And there's a little amphitheater that's built in the back of the chain with little benches and things that I never knew existed. A secret place or whatever it is. So it was really, a really, really neat day for the kids. The kids were really, really enjoying it and helped that it was 80 degrees and sunny. So it was a really nice day. I was glad to be invited. So, thank you, Rhonda. Good job.
Sounds like she's talking about tearing it down and building a whole new building out there.
Wouldn't that be fun?
Wouldn't that be fun?
I don't know. I heard we're gonna close it.
Yeah, how's that going?
Yeah, how's that, yeah. Do we take a vote right now, Dave? Anyone else? I can tell you how to build a yurt today.
Oh, several of us went to graduation too. And that was awesome. One minute, 17 seconds.
You betcha.
No, 27.
No, it was seven.
She timed it.
It was a minute and a half, almost.
Oh, it wasn't?
It was. I timed it.
No.
Because you told me it was a minute and I didn't believe that.
It was under a minute.
No, it was one minute and like 27 seconds.
Did that include the standing ovation?
No. There was no standing ovation. What did you talk about?
George Burns was mentioned.
Yeah, no, it was actually good. Very welcome.
And I want to compliment Connie on her lovely end of school year speech. And actually, I thought it worked out really well when I had that reader final. It was great.
It actually worked out better, yes.
I emailed Dave, who I know felt bad. I said, what turned out, started out as an oversight, turned into a stroke of genius. I've got so many compliments on it being at the end. You just never know.
It worked out very well.
Yeah, thank you.
Wonderful. You can just take that out of the email.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you want to do the fall, I'll do the spring.
Okay.
I've already been thinking about something. It took me a year to pull it together, so this is a good little advance notice.
Are we going to the common house?
Yes. As you know, there was a bid process set up for the common house, the house constructed by Dave Larson, Jim Richmond, and students. And the bids were due on June 4th or 5th, I'm not sure. But a couple of days before that, we got our first bid and that turned out to be the only bid. We had a $70,000 minimum. The bid came in from Roger Neemuth at $73,500, I believe.
73,551.
73,551. So, we are recommending that the board accept that qualified bid and move on with moving the house.
Could you explain, Dave, if you would please, the removal process or the timing on that?
Yeah, do we have a required date?
For you, August 15th, the house, according to the bid spec, should be moved by the buyer at their own expense. So I, you know, Roger, we had the process set up with green pulse concrete, they're working through, so they have a methodology to keep that up there.
Steve Johnson, the question was the process for moving the house. And there's an August 15th deadline for having the house moved off the property. Roger Neemuth is already in process of making arrangements to have that done.
Okay, thank you.
So do we need a motion?
Is there a motion to accept?
To accept the bid?
Second.
Do we need, I think, a voice?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Recognition.
I just wanted to point out an email sent from Jeff Dolinski, high school counselor regarding the scholarship foundation. You hear us talk about that and you actually heard me talk about that at the breakfast as well. This year, 78 seniors received $258,460 of local scholarship money. And in addition to that, there is in-kind money from universities, colleges, et cetera. That totaled 1.1 million. And Mr. Dolinski has some experience with other schools and amounts of money they raise and give out for scholarships. And he says this amount, just the community amount alone would blow most of them away. And this is really a significant number. And of course, you contribute to that with donations to this, to the foundation. Also, there's an employee checkoff where employees can check off the box and have amounts deducted from each check to go to the foundation. I know several do that, so that's a good deal overall. And there was the chess team at nationals. Want to point out, Mr. Elam passed out a middle school paper today that talks about two national chess tournaments in Atlanta at the end of April. Team took 13 place trophy in the junior high blitz tournament. Number of students there participating in special congratulations Ryan Hemlock for winning a third place class trophy. And the team finished in eighth place out of more than 100 schools at the junior high national chess tournament. Eighth grader Ryan again went undefeated with six wins and a draw and is the K-9 under 1250 national champion. So congratulations to Coach Jim and the chess team.
That's pretty neat.
Dave, could I just have one question on the recognition about going back to the scholarship? I read that sheet that Mr. Dolinski put together. It was very impressive. I just wonder if maybe we could get from him sometime in the future, there's no hurry, but what the status of the scholarship fund is in terms of, is it pretty healthy these days? Is it continuing? Does it look good for, you know, the next five, 10 years? Or, you know, how are they doing on that overall? I'm just curious as to how that's, that they were gaining.
I can speak to that a little bit. I'm the foundation committee and, you know, we're working to build the endowment. And with all charitable foundations, having a healthy endowment really is the future for giving. So we have been growing that fund and it is very healthy. They even have a part of the fund that's held by the Wapaka Community Foundation that's overseeing. So, yeah, everything looks very rosy. We expect, and we have increased the number of scholarships given and the financial amount. If you go back over the last five years, every year our giving has increased. So, looks very good. Good.
So ineffective endowment simply means that they won't give out any more money than they brought in previous year. There are guidelines for doing that, so therefore the principle stays the same or grows.
Right. The foundation has two, two kind of areas that it oversees. One is the endowment and the other part is all the named grants that are given, the named scholarships. So we have to follow the directions of each donor. Some of the donors, you know, want their money given away and when it's gone, it's gone. So those aren't endowments per se, but the foundation is working to grow its endowment. But that's, that's been a real effort. And in the last couple of years, there's been a mailing that's gone out to all the businesses in the community of Wapaka, asking for them to consider donations to the endowment.
It would be a good idea to have a report on that, what some of the larger ones are and the fund balance, so to speak, as best we can. So let's put that on for future agenda.
Sounds good. Okay. Committee action reports. Connie, buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds did meet. Take it away, Dave.
Okay, they met and talked about a number of things. The only action item was the memorandum of understanding with Wapaka County regarding the multi-use winter trail, trail going through the high school. Wapaka County would maintain it for snow shoeing, snow skiing, cross-country and skating and skiing and fat tire biking. And there was, the MOU was presented to the committee, they approved it. Since then, the county has asked to take another look at it. They just need to polish it up a little bit. So I would ask that there be a separate motion from the one that was given at the committee meeting that just says, we approve the MOU with administration's ability to fine tune it at the county's request, if that's okay. Because it's not ready yet, they just called yesterday and wanted to modify it. And it has to do with, they just need to get liability insurance for themselves, I think that was the issue.
Yeah, that's to their policy. Yes.
So this one I have in front of me here is not the final one?
You know, it's going to be tweaked, it's not the final one. It may not be tweaked either. They just want to take another look at it.
Because there's some things in red here. I wondered if that was the new.
Where did that one come from?
I don't know, it was sitting here when I got here.
That's the one that's posted online too, that has the red.
Okay. Those are what they're looking at.
Okay, so that's the correct one?
Mm-hmm.
You have to date one, actually.
But they have not come back and said, this is it? Can't vote?
No.
Okay.
So do you want?
I think a separate motion and a second to accept the MOU with the county giving administration authority to review the county's changes and accept them.
Somebody make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the memorandum of understanding with the county as pertains to multi-use winter trail and any suggested changes run past the administration prior to, and if there's anything of consequence, I'll bring it back to a future meeting, otherwise we can.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In addition, then, the committee talked about some of the conditions of the grounds, the wind fence, baseball diamond, and multitude, many other items that came up in regards to building grounds, but no action was taken. It was more of a informational.
Personnel committee standing.
We've had several meetings and several items to go through and recommendations to bring forward to the board. And the first relates to the 2013-14 collective bargaining agreement with the WTA, with our teachers association, with whom we met on both occasions. And this is a recommendation by the personnel committee to the board, a 0.57% total base wage increase utilizing costing templates provided by Dr. Cashel that are consistent with the parameters outlined and required by the state of Wisconsin. And I'll just read through the minutes here. The costing template consists of a modified total package increase, a total base wage increase, plus the supplemental pay increase to include the district's WRS contribution and experience increments that will equal a total increase of 2.07%. And consistent with previous QEO costing only experience increment changes and not delaying changes that happened because people have taken additional classes and gotten additional credits, will be costed against the teacher package increase. So the committee recommends and moves that this be approved.
Is there a second?
No second necessary. Committee recommendation.
Does that also affect the board's salaries?
I could give you a long explanation, but yeah, just no.
Do we have to do a vote? Do you want to take these all?
Well, we have separate motions from the committee.
We have separate motions.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I love steak.
Okay. Appropriate. Thank you.
The second motion by the committee is to bring before the board a recommendation for a 0.55, this is for 2014-15 collective bargaining agreement with the Wapaka Teachers Association, for a 0.55% total base wage increase. And this is pending a change in the WRS employee contribution that will be costed into the package once we know the rate.
We still don't know that rate, Carl. I haven't seen anything on it yet. Pat, your feeling was that it's either not going to change or go down?
Correct. I have a meeting later this month in Madison and oftentimes in June, we'll be able to project that, what that rate change, if any, might be. Sometimes it has to wait till September to pay, just kind of based upon, you know, the timing. But last year, the projections, if things were a quote, kind of a normal year this year, which seems to be shaping up to be sort of normal, there probably would be no change, at least addition. There might be, if it was a good year, it could be actually a negative number. So if the change were to be at all, if anything, would probably be no more than 0.1. But I, my guess is that probably that even won't happen.
Currently it's 7.0 for employer and 7.0 for employee. So that would be a minor change.
Very minor. It's going to change at all.
Last year, we knew about June 12th or so, I think it came-
Well, that's why that the next meeting is due, we should know. But a couple of years ago, they delayed that because of some things. I can't recall exactly why. So it's possible to be delayed, but probably we will know in a couple of weeks.
Anyway, again, as with the 13-14 collective bargaining agreement, it's consistent, it consists of the total modified package increase and the total package increase is equal to 1.46% for 14-15. So this is a motion brought forward, a recommendation from personnel committee to the full board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One second.
Aye.
Okay.
And finally, we also met then on June 4th to discuss wages for 14-15 for support staff, individual contracts for assorted non-administrative employees and also for our administrators. And the recommendation of the committee and the motion brought forward is that, here's the 13-14, the costing for support staff will be done similarly to what we did in 13-14, costing in that 1.46% will be the minimum increase for those employees, not going through a lane change. The costing template for employees under contract will consist of a modified total package increase, a total salary increase, plus the district's WRS contribution to equal a total increase of 1.46%.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same.
Thank you.
Pat, could you have to avoid the previous one to 14-15?
14-15 for teachers?
Couldn't you avoid it?
I couldn't, but I would say, but I'll vote yes for the support staff.
Most time?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Sandy.
Future dates, July 8th, a regular board meeting again at 7:00 AM. August 2nd, there's a WASP summer leadership institute in Madison. Anyone interested in attending that, you should receive a separate flyer in the mail from WASP on that. If you're interested, let me know. Items added to the agenda, these would normally be under consent, but because they came in late and you haven't had a chance to review, they're added under administrator portion agenda. They will be acted on separately then. First is the sale of two school buses, received $4,200 for that. Lee, would you just explain the process you use for selling the two buses?
Sure. Usually about two weeks before the end of the school year, identify which units we're going to sell based on the number of new buses we have coming in. This year, we purchased two new buses for the 14-15 school year, so I have two old units that were needing to be sold. So usually I post them on Craigslist, word of mouth, ask people around, things of that nature. Sometimes we get a lot of feedback, sometimes we get none. This year, we did find two buyers on Craigslist and we go with the highest bidder per bus. One was sold this past weekend, went to Minnesota, and another one just went down into the valley, going to Minasha and then heading out to California eventually, so.
And made a good bargain.
Yeah. In fact, we got an email over the weekend, kind of interesting. You want to share it?
Oh, yeah, please, please.
Dave Guessen, who's the director of field operations in South Africa, or West Africa, sent me an email saying that he was working in the port in Congre, Guinea, West Africa. And this past weekend, one of our buses that I sold two years ago arrived at the port in West Africa this weekend, so.
The Wapaka was still on the side?
Well, you could see where, removed the stents thing, but because of the faded paint, we're still boarding it, yeah. So he said it'll be used as a school bus taxi there in that community of West Africa, so quite, quite interesting.
Is there a motion to approve?
Some will. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second is the hiring of a middle school math teacher, Steve Wilson. Steve Wilson is interviewed on Friday, so I wasn't able, I wasn't able to put him on the agenda. I met with him Friday morning and everything seems to be in order. For those of you who, if you remember, Julie Foot, Alan Foot's, well, this is her boyfriend. And they're not from here, they're not living here now, but she's in Madison and I think he's in that area as well, but they were, wanted to move here, and so this will allow them to do that. Good.
Is there a motion?
Some will.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the last is, oh, I, because of licensure requirements, I need to get six credits as per my contract. There's a salary adjustment for $100 per credit and that needs to be in on June. I just got the grade report. The three credits, in case you're interested, one was through OZDA, the Superintendent Association, and the other was through the CISA 5. We have study groups that meet once a month and for, for an hour. And those were the three credits.
I would need approval.
Second.
I'd like to hear what you learned.
Yes.
And what his score was.
Actually, I don't-
What were the topics?
Well, the topic, the one topic was the book that I mentioned before about resiliency and how costumes learn in poverty and in spite of poverty. That was the book and the book report. And the other topics had to do with just the day-to-day things that administrators, it's interesting, there are, there are a lot of new CISA 5, as you know, not only CISA 5, but throughout the state, a lot of new administrators. So you go to these meetings, you start hearing about the things that new administrators are dealing with. I didn't have a lot to offer in terms of problems, but there was a lot I could offer in terms of experience, so. That was a valuable, and the book was a part of that as well.
My motion stands.
Okay. Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
If you take care of that, that'll free, aye.
Oh, yes. It's coming down.
Okay.
It's a little, little big for my experience, but I've got a strategy for taking it down.
This is a neighborhood blank issue.
What are you doing, Sadie, Steve?
I think I don't know. I'll wear my neck brace just so you don't make me do too much heavy stuff.
Okay. I hope you're talking about that, Steve, not-
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Can I just ask about the summer school? Is that on the agenda?
It is, and the information is handed out today. You have a question about that?
Yeah, I do. Um, I, this looks awesome. I was with some parents from our church this weekend, they're in the Waianaeva Freeland District. And I was interested in their summer school program. And they bus and they serve breakfast and lunch and bus home. How does, how does that all work? How do districts determine that? I mean, I was amazed at that process, that that goes on. Is that money-making? I mean, what's the deal with that?
Pat, any comments?
The busing is something that we can choose to do or not choose to do. We get a good turnout without busing. If we would bus, as my understanding, we could take it from different areas and try to just bus them in. Lunch, I'm not sure how that all factors in. I know that Appleton, there's something with free and reduced lunch, and if you have a certain percentage of population, then you get, you can offer that in summer as well. I don't know, it's something that we are quite there yet for.
I think that lunch program is separate from summer school. It goes all, all summer. It's not a summer school function, the lunch program that you're talking about in Appleton. We have the ability to get federal funds to provide free and reduced lunch throughout summer for multiple students. We just have not chosen to do that. And breakfast is included as part of a separate program, but similar program. I don't know if Waianaeva is doing it through that program or if that's part of their summer school, I'm not sure. There are very, as Mr. Elm said, different variations of what we can do, although we just, I guess we thought it's not broken, don't fix it at this point.
We did look at it over this past winter and kind of thought, let's kind of keep things as status quo, because it is being successful. We are getting good results of kids attending and so.
Our, what are the hours? Are, what are the hours of summer school?
Hours are from eight to 12:30. We went from, last year it was eight to 11:40 for June, and then eight to 11:55 for August. We can go to a maximum four and a half hours per day. And so, rather than going 12 days, we went 10 days for four and a half hours each day. Just making it common for both June and August so that parents don't come early trying to pick up their kids in August or late in June. It's just making things a little more consistent.
If the kids are there for all the sessions, is there a chunk of time when they can do a snack?
They're always welcome to bring snacks. They would bring snacks before. There are kids who get lunch closer to 12:30 in regular school day, so.
Do parents drop kids off? I mean, I know, like, for school, even though it doesn't start till five to eight or whatever, parents drop kids off at seven o'clock. Is that the case for summer school, too?
There are a handful of kids that get there early.
Like what's early?
The seven o'clock, seven fifteen range. Most of the kids come flooding in about 7:45.
Is that, does that make money for a district to do that?
We come out on the positive side. It's not...
Do we make money at summer school?
Yes, I say we come out on the positive side, but it's still, it's close. We arrange it so that it's not a money loss. Summer schools throughout the state, summer schools for, they're pretty flexible, but they vary. From some schools not offering any to others offering in full, full program. That was a youth telling me.
Right, my son teaches Mont Cora, and they don't have any summer school of any consequence. They do some credit recovery at the high school for those who failed. But as far as middle school and elementary, there really isn't anything, which I was real surprised at because we have such a big program, and most of the school districts around him something. And he said they just haven't had any. Don't know why, but they don't.
I was just surprised to hear that. It was, you know, from seven o'clock in the morning till one o'clock in the afternoon was like school. It's not wild.
I will call Scott and see what that's about, how they come out on that. We, the way you earn money, so to speak, is to administer that kids accumulate during the summer then, combine to create a one FTE for a student. So, you total up the minutes and divide by a number. You can come up with a number of additional FTE enrollments, so to speak, for state aid purposes. So, you can pull that off and see what the summer school program did for them. I think what we're going to see, for years, everyone's been looking at ways to maximize their summer school from counting swimming lessons that are given by the YMCA. County had to have a teacher present as part of that in order to get reverse. So, I think what you're going to see in the future now is the distance learning or the computer courses that kids are taking at home included as part of the summer school. And they had a position paper from the FBI come out recently that said, okay, there are some cautions to that as well, rules that you have to follow. But I think there's going to be an expulsion in that area for summer school purposes. And in some cases, districts have very little expenditure either, and a pretty big return from FTE for students. Wide range, I will check with...
Yeah, I was just surprised to hear that. I didn't know that that was an option.
No, it's just passed around. You can if you'd like to.
There's a little card from Marlene Peterson. I'll read it. It has been, it has truly been an honor to work for the Wapaka School District. We have the greatest kids, and I'll truly miss each and every one of them. Thank you all for the retirement party and beautiful retirement gift, sincerely. Pretty neat.
I didn't record a motion on consent agenda. Someone make that.
I don't think you gave your...
I am struck.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm going to do a little call on that. Steve Johnson? Where, okay, thank you. Kirsten Greenfield?
Yes.
Connie Baldwin?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Patrick Barrett?
Yes.
Steve Chamberlain?
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before we do that, as long as we're talking about the consent agenda of all the staffing and the principals are here, could we just get an idea of what's still out there in terms of needs to be filled?
Sure.
We obviously filled a lot of them, but what's left?
Let's start with, Rhonda, you don't have any. Well, you do have...
Can we guard that chain? This is due to some transfers.
That was due to a transfer. John?
The current numbers, all teachers are hired at this point, and we just need to add some support staff.
We're sitting on the fence on at least one class with...
First and second grade, we're right there.
We have to have eighteen-to-one ratio, and we're close, we're full.
Don't we have to be fifteen-to-one?
No, that was changed a few years ago, it might be eighteen-to-one. Ben?
We're looking at a combined middle school, high school health by a teacher.
And that was due to a, well, a transfer, a resignation and a transfer. Carl, do you have anything on there?
Well, just the English and choir, so, along with the halftime play.
If we wanted to stop into summer school, where is the main listing of what classes are offered where? So, we would know where to go.
Contact Shannon, Shannon Singer.
Okay.
So, she'll be at the middle school this week. She'll be at the WLC next couple of weeks for summer school.
Most of the classes are held at WLC?
Most of them are, yeah.
Yeah, if you're at the high school at this point, and I talked to Ben Williams about this, it's been primarily credit recovery and so English, math, social studies. And that's basically all that we have in high school these days. All of the other fun ones are at middle school, WLC quite a lot.
So, you're teaching?
You're saying...
I, no, I'm teaching in credit recovery.
I thought you had jewelry and scrapbooking.
Scrapbooking maybe.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, have a good day.
You, too.